Protections. Which which was. A law that was on the books as indicated since nineteen sixty-four to protect employment rights and discrimination in the context of, among other things, sex. And the Supreme Court ended up then deciding that the term sex included transgender and gay, bisexual, lesbian rights. And both sides claimed to be strict constructionists in this case. The six-person majority claimed that they were just simply interpreting sex as it should be interpreted. And the other three who dissented in the result claimed that the others were were the six were legislating and that simply said the word sex did not include those those classifications of sex. Nonetheless, the Supreme Court has spoken in its law of the land. We should remember that this decision is is one that was decided in the context of employment law. And the court made it very clear that it was simply deciding that case in the context solely of Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, which dealt with employment law. And so it's no longer legal to discriminate against L B G T persons in the context of employment law. Now, we we have on our books policies that forbid the discrimination on the basis of sex. And so from now on, it's clear that the Supreme Court means that that word encompasses L B G T persons, and they're covered now by federal law. There is also a state statute, the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act, which is also a civil rights protection kind of act that protects persons under the state law. And it has not yet, of course, been interpreted because it's state law, and this was a federal case that the Supreme Court decided. However, these the Michigan Attorney General has already decided that she will the state will be interpreting that term the same way as the federal jurisdiction, federal judiciary has has interpreted it. And and I suspect there will be some case law, some court decisions that will come along that will make it clear that that's how it is to be interpreted. But in the meantime, the Attorney General has has concluded that that's how it should be interpreted. As I said, this was only in the context of of employment law, but it's it's not a very far leap to go from employment law to other forms of discrimination. And if if the word sex was interpreted in the context of employment law to include L B G T rights, it's it's, I think, almost a certainty that it will be expanded to also include others categories of civil rights as time progresses and the next cases go up. And so, for instance, if I was a civil rights plaintiff lawyer, I would be looking for the first for a housing case and be taking that one up. And I suspect the courts will have no choice but to interpret the word sex in in other acts that give you civil rights protections the same way that the Supreme Court has interpreted in the case of employment law and and apply it to other categories of of discrimination. So it it was a somewhat unexpected case in that the two conservative judges decided in a way that any persons didn't expect they would decide it. And in fact, it was even written by one of the conservative judges. And I guess with that, I'll I'll conclude. And if there are questions or whatnot, I can try to answer them. And I don't pretend to be a labor and employment law lawyer, but I think I've adequately covered it. But I'll be happy to answer questions.
Randy, I've got a question, and and I apologize for putting you on the spot a little bit. But Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act, does that relate to just employment? Or does that is that a little bit more encompassing?
I believe it's more encompassing there.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
And and so I I think, you know, over time, it's going to be interpreted broadly, but technically, the federal case is only one that applies to employment law at this point.
But the Michigan Attorney General has indicated that. Yeah, like he's like you explained, Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act is going to be interpreted a similar way.
More broadly.
Yeah.
Yeah, similar way and and more probably more broadly. But the there isn't court, there are not any court cases currently at the state law level that that do that. It's her interpretation at this point.
Counsel, any questions for Randy? About this matter? Now is your chance. Okay, Randy, thank you. I'm not seeing any questions, so.
All right.
And and I know you're available to counsel other other times, too, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, I was going to say, if anything comes up, feel free to call me and we can have some further discussion.
Okay, thank you. Next item that we have scheduled for public comment is city manager's report. It's a code enforcement issue. And Ken or Matt, do you want to take this? And then maybe Randy also?
I'll I'll get it started, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks.
For the last thirty years, Rita Schalhoope has operated Rita Swim School out of her home at forty-sixty Osage. By all accounts, this service has been very valuable to Granville, as well as the West Michigan community. On one account, described Rita as a blessing to the Granville community. And and I think we all agree with that. She's provided invaluable services to families throughout this area. However, early this late this spring, we began to receive several complaints from the neighborhood about the swim school, from the about the noise, about the traffic, about litter in the yard. So under my direction, our code officer, Bo Peters, sent a letter to Rita asking her to comply with Section twelve point eleven of the zoning ordinance, which which requires home occupations to follow certain rules, not allowing them to become nuisances in the neighborhoods, requiring them to conduct all businesses inside the home does not allow them to create significant amount of traffic in their neighborhood. And these are some of the complaints that we were getting. So Bo Peters wrote the letter. The letter immediately drew attention from many of Rita's supporters, clients, as well as media attention. So last week, last Friday, as a matter of fact, I had a really good phone call with Rita, talk about her options as we move forward. One thing I recommended that she does, and she followed up with that, is apply for a to the zoning board of appeals to to for one, for a use variance. On the second is to 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 go against the actions, to ask them to leave her of the actions that we've taken against her under the code, under the zoning ordinance. So this morning, I did receive an application for from Rita for both items. And that stays any action we have against Rita until the zoning board can hold a public hearing on August nineteenth. This will allow Rita to get through all of her classes that she has scheduled for the summer. I also talked to Rita about what type of compromise we can do. And what I recommended that she does is work with her neighbors to see what kind of compromise works for the neighbors. And again, if that works with the neighbors, city can certainly work with that as well. So there going forward, there are some options that we can take. We can let the process that's typically required is the zoning board process. And that's what she's applied for. We can look at an amended ordinance if the council wishes to. Section twelve point eleven does not specifically address swimming lessons. The ordinance has been in our code since nineteen sixty-seven. Addresses most problematic home occupations, such as someone who's trying to run a garage out of out of their home or some scrap metal business or something like that. I don't think it ever thought about swim lessons. So again, there's a lot of ways we can handle this. I'm just bringing you up to speed where we are. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Matt?
Matt, when did you say? The zoning board of appeals meets?
August nineteenth.
Thank you.
Randy, you you had something you wanted to add as well?
Yeah, maybe I should talk a little bit more about the process and some other app, some clarification on some of the options. I mean, we have to start with proposition that what what's being conducted there is really a business in a residential zone. And so, you know, the neighbors and any residential persons here in the city have some expectation of what a residential zone should be like with regard to peace and quiet and the ability to enjoy their their homes. And so what you what you have is a conflict between a commercial operation as as well liked and and whatnot as it is, it's still a commercial operation in a residential zone. And so we have to address that. Now, in the short term, what she's doing is exactly the right thing, which is asking for a use variance and an appeal of the order to the zoning board of appeals. Under state law, the zoning enabling act specifically provides that once she files that use variance request, that any enforcement action is stayed until that matter is resolved. So she she's doing what is contemplated by the zoning enabling act as a process. Now, having asked for a use variance, I I must indicate that a use variance is very tough to get. You you have certain criteria you have to meet enabled in order to obtain a legitimate use variance for a particular use, because you're you're really asking for a license to violate the zoning ordinance. In other words, the uses that are normally permitted are residential, and you're asking in this case for a commercial use. And there are certain criteria you have to meet to be able to get a use variance, and that they're they're tough. She may not, in my opinion, probably will not be able to qualify, which then leads you to the second set of options, which really relate to an amendment to the zoning ordinance to address swim lessons in a residential zone. And there's nothing that precludes an ordinance from allowing for that and for set and from setting conditions for that operation, so that it reduces the nuisance concern of neighbors for for that use in a residential zone. And and it sounds like Ms. Rita and and the neighbors are in a position to try to talk about what what's reasonable for their neighborhood. And if they can come to some conclusion, then it's certainly possible to amend the zoning ordinance to allow for those for that use with certain criteria and conditions as as to how that use is going to be operated. That process, though, involves a request for for an amendment that starts with the planning commission. And when the planning commission works through it all and ends up with a proposed modification, a proposed ordinance amendment, then it must hold a special, a public hearing with notice, et cetera. And when they then have the public hearing, they'll hear both sides, though. They'll get input whether or not the proposed ordinance makes sense. And at some point in time, they'll make a judgment as to whether they send it forward to the to the city council for final action. It'll then come to you, assuming it's forwarded to you, and you'll make the final decision on what it looks like. So anyway, that that's my two cents worth with regard to process at this point in time. I'd be happy to answer questions, and the mayor, the council may have questions of me. I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions for Randy on this matter? Andy Steenstra?
Yeah, Ken or Randy, when is the last time that we looked at this ordinance and looked at the the use cases or that the planning commission or Z B A looked at this particular ordinance?
I recall the home accessory occupation being amended any time in the short-term past history. You know, my history with Granville is now thirty-four years. It may have come up in that time, but I doubt it. This is a pretty standard ordinance that is common in all municipalities. As the city attorney mentioned, it's there to protect residences from impacts of non-residential uses. So it it is fairly common language. There's nothing particularly onerous or restrictive about Granville versus other communities. It's something that is seen quite often. It's really fairly rare to have conversation about this. We do enforce it on occasion. And usually when we do, it's usually applauded by the neighborhood because somebody has taken something too far. Like Matt said, it may be somebody doing auto repair work in their garage or somebody that's got a big dumpster and and does their roofing business or their trucking business from there. So it's usually not controversial. But I think the significance here is that it never really contemplated this kind of a operation. I'm sure there's swim lessons that have happened in Granville in backyards for a long time. This is the only one that seems to rise to a scale that has really aggravated a neighborhood because of all the items that Mr. Butt spoke of, the traffic noise congestion that can.
And just to add a add a couple comments to that, there's also nothing that precludes the council ultimately from modifying the ordinance to deal with specific situations. And so, for instance, the state has mandated that you must allow music lessons in a home. And and evidently, there was some controversy at some point in time somewhere in Michigan with regard to music lessons in a home. And the state has, through the zoning enabling act, specifically directed that you have to allow music lessons within homes. So obviously, you know, there there's precedent for dealing with specific kinds of problems that may arise, specific kinds of uses that may arise. And you 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 can modify your ordinance to address those kinds of situations.
Any other questions for Randy? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much. Justin, did you have a question?
Oh, sorry, I was just shifting.
Okay, okay. I just see a little movement somewhere, so great. Yeah, just thanks. Matt, Ken, Randy, I just know would note. And for anybody who's listening, before we open it up to public comment, city council has received, I haven't counted them, but copies of probably dozens of emails, letters, notes, other correspondence. So there's a lot of interest in it locally and elsewhere. So council does have copies of many, many emails. All righty, so we're going to open it up in in a moment to public comment. And so, Marcy, could you let all of our guests know again how they can make a public comment? The procedure for doing that?
Sure. Right now, I have everybody that is not counsel. You're going to be unmuted. If you're joining us by video through Zoom, you're going to want to utilize the raise your hand method. If you're joining us by phone, you're going to want to press star. We'll toggle your mute on and off, and pressing star nine will raise your hand.
Okay, great. Thanks, Marcy. All right, anybody like to make a public comment about any matter? Just we'd ask, after you begin, please let us know your name and address. So if we need to get in touch with you, we can do that. We do that in our regular council meetings, our in-person meetings, and we do that also in the Zoom meeting. So please just indicate that you'd like to make a public comment. Let Marcy know that, and she will allow that to happen. Anybody like to make a comment?
We might have one here. I'm asking someone to unmute. We may have to come back to that one, Steve.
Okay. Is there anybody else, Marcy, who'd like to make a public comment?
Right now, no.
There, there was a question in the chat.
Okay. What, Josh, you've got it open. I don't have it open yet, so.
Yeah, the question was from Wagoner.
Okay, okay.
Asking for clarification. Her use variance appeal will not be revealed until August nineteen. The ordinance is she is currently not complying with will be allowed through August. It's a question.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. Thanks for catching that, Josh. Appreciate that.
And and Mayor, that that's a matter of state law. This it's it's not something we allow. The state law specifically says that if there's an enforcement action, if someone then files it for a variance, it's automatically stayed. So it's a matter of state law that that occurs.
So then the next step is it goes to the zoning board of appeals?
Correct.
Okay. Marcy, any other public comment that you see? J R.
I guess just to to clarify, too, those zoning board of appeals meetings have already been preset for the entire calendar year, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Marcy, the other person who wanted to make comment, are they available?
It's Wagoner, and I asked to unmute. She does have some more questions.
Okay, sure. There, looks like they're unmuted now.
I'm muted now.
Okay. Oh. Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I live next door to Rita, and I am just trying to clarify. Can you can you state again the specific ordinances that are being broken right now?
Matt, do you want to answer that question?
Absolutely. It's Section twelve point eleven of the zoning ordinance, which restricts home occupations, more specifically in the ordinance. Does not home occupations are not allowed to create any traffic congestion on the street. It must be conducted wholly within the home itself and not outside the home. And another part of that is that it cannot create any type of nuisance.
And and Matt, you want to just cite the sections of that? It's twelve eleven point, you know, whatever? If you have that.
I I do. Pull that up. So twelve point eleven point A is conducted entirely within the principal residential building. Twelve point eleven point C does not constitute or create a nuisance. Twelve point eleven H does not increase parking congestion on the street.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Randy.
So to our guest who just made the comment, does that answer your question or any other?
I guess I'm just wondering if these have been broken, like for possibly years? It we're still forced to wait until August is the answer, right?
Yeah, that that is the answer because of the state law provision about a stay of enforcement if she files for a use variance, which she's done. That that time between that time between now and then might be utilized to work on some sort of a compromise if there is to be one.
Okay, thank you.
Great, no, appreciate your comment. Thanks for joining us tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you. Marcy, is there? Marcy, is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? Okay. All right, we'll move forward with the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can we address this as well? Can we can we make comments on that as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, if I could, I would then. I think a few things to be said. First off, social media is a wonderful thing, but it was also very disappointing to see the way that social media was used to attack neighbors, to attack city staff. And I think that's wholly unacceptable. Like many things in our country, I think this became an issue of two extremes. And those were either we shut down Ms. Rita, or we force the neighbors to just live with it. And I don't really think those are our two options. I think the the two better questions we can ask are, do we think that someone who has proper certification and insurance should be able to teach a swim lesson? I think most people would say yes. And the second question we should be asking is, would we want to live on that street? Would we want our yards blocked, our litter in our yards, our our mailboxes blocked, et cetera? Because I think a lot of people see it through the perspective of bringing their kids there, and it's a wonderful thing, but it's another thing entirely to have to live that reality day in and day out. So those are the two questions that I asked. And my answer to those questions leads me to think that first, we should change the ordinance. I think it's too restrictive to completely ban all outdoor activity. I've seen over off of Ivan Rest, there's a family that sells hanging pots in their backyard, something like that. So I think in general, the idea of something small scale operating outside the home when you can already do daycare or in-home businesses, I think it's fair to allow both. But then the second question, would I want to live on that street? No, I don't think I would. So that leads me to think we need to develop some sort of ordinance that places limits on the number of patrons you can have, the hours of operation that that can take place. So I'd really like to see personally the planning commission come up with something. I know that Ms. Rita said in one of the news reports that, you know, she has a hard time telling people no sometimes. And that gets to the fact of people said, well, why after thirty years are we suddenly doing this now? Well, I think it's because things have changed over thirty years. It started out small scale, but now it's risen to a level that it has become more disruptive and more of a nuisance. And as she said, she sometimes has a hard time telling people no because she's a good person and it's in high demand. And so I think if the city can take steps to take that burden off her shoulders and really lay out the parameters for people, it takes off the burden from her of having to tell people no. And it also gives the neighbors protections with an ordinance that has specific parameters. So my personal opinion, I'd really like to see the planning commission visit this issue and amend Section twelve point one-one to allow outdoor business operations in a very limited scope. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Justin, for the comment. So my question for you, Randy, is is this something that the city council would ask the planning commission to take a look at? Or does the planning commission? I know we've got the chair of the planning commission with us on Zoom tonight, and also J R is on the planning commission. Is this something they take up themselves? Kind of what would that look like, Randy?
Well, certainly you as the council are within your rights to specifically ask the planning commission to address certain items such as this. If you don't, Ms. Rita, as a property owner, has the right to do that. And technically, the neighbors would have the right to ask the planning commission to do the same thing. So there's really three avenues to get this in front of the planning commission, any which, any one of which is legal. So I I guess with regard to your question as to the council, yes, the council, if it wishes to, can initiate action. It doesn't have to, but it may. It's legal.
Steve, I'd love to add, if I can.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd back Justin on directing the planning commission to take a look at this. I think here you have an ordinance, like we said, was written in nineteen sixty-seven for a specific purpose, and things have changed since then. And, you know, we I I was thinking specifically, Justin, I haven't seen the house with the hanging pots, but, you know, I was thinking about doggy daycares and how many people have that. And let me tell you, you're not going to contain a dog all day. And I'm sure there's some noise considered with that. And if we continue to operate from a place of waiting until complaints come in to to address these things, we're behind. And I I think we just need to start looking at it and say, okay, this is an old ordinance. It might not still apply. Let's take a look at it. And let's let's see if we can find something that's more reasonable for what we would expect in our community today. And I think that's the biggest thing for me is, what do we want our community to to be like? And we need to write the ordinance to support that because I look at what Ms. Rita's doing, and she's got a really good mission. You know, she she wants to teach kids how to swim. She has a passion for it, and she creates some really good community herself. At the same time, I see what Justin's saying on the At the same time, I see what Justin's saying on the other, the other hand, neighbors want a quiet community as well. And so I think we, as a city council, we're the ones who need to decide this ultimately with the help of residents input, with the help of our planning commission to say, what kind of community do we want to be? And then we need to put that stake in the ground through our ordinance and then we need to enforce it evenly amongst everyone, not just the ones who get complaints on them. So I think city staff was doing a fine job following through on the ordinance as it was written. But I don't think that this ordinance is up to date. And so I would love to back Justin in directing the, the planning commission to take a look at this and then bring something back to us that we can look at while ZBA is looking at this appeal as well.
I see Ken Crombin, you're writing something down. Do you need a formal motion for that or is this a consensus on, on the part of city council that like the planning commission to take a look at that?
I think if council wants to direct that action, it probably should take the form of a motion. But no, we do take note of the public comments. We take note of the council comments. Both the comments the council members have offered so far are in the vein of, let's take a look at this. We don't have to wait until the zoning board action to do that. The planning commission can start on that sooner. There's a meeting in July that's scheduled. Changing an ordinance doesn't happen in one meeting. There is a process that the city attorney has talked about. It probably involves at least a couple of meetings to have the planning commission work through it and come up with some idea what they want. And then ultimately a public hearing and a recommendation to the city council. And then the statement that I believe Andy just made is accurate. The city council is the body that, that will then vote ultimately on what it is. I think everyone's interested in trying to understand all the aspects of the issue. And it will be, it'll take some thought to come up with the kinds of restrictions that the neighbors expect to have to protect their enjoyment of their property and yet still allow this use. I don't know exactly what form those restrictions would take. We certainly would encourage more dialogue between Ms. Rita and the neighbors to try to figure out what that might be. And those can be offered back to the city prior to looking at something. But just back to the specific question. Yeah, I think if you want to direct the planning commission to do something, it would be helpful to have that in the form of a motion.
And the motion can simply be, simply be to direct the planning commission to examine section 12.11 with regard to home occupations and specifically swimming lessons.
Randy, with an amendment to the zoning ordinance, does that set up a grandfathered status for Rita's current operations?
It really wouldn't be grandfathered. To be grandfathered, you typically have to have been using it legally when the ordinance changes.
Okay.
And here, here it's not legal to start with as it is. And the ordinance is being changed to allow for it, not to prohibit it. So it doesn't really fit into the normal parameters for grandfathering.
All right. Thank you for that.
All right.
Personally, I think we don't need to be looking just at swim lessons though, too. Just, just my two cents. I think we need to be looking at the whole, the whole ordinance and all the things that could, otherwise we're, we're going to deal with this again. You know, at some point here. So just, just my two cents on that front.
And with regard to that, if I can interrupt. That's probably wise to look at it in a broader sense, but, but in the short term, it would seem to me you, you have an immediate issue that you need to look at. You may need to spend some time on that and initially resolve that issue and, and then continue to look at the issue in a broader sense. That's just my two cents worth.
Okay, Josh, you had a comment also?
Yeah, I was just going to say I agree with Justin and Andy. I think it's worth looking at that ordinance and seeing what we can update. And I agree with Andy and it should be not just limited to swimming lessons, but, you know, any kind of home-based business that might be outdoors within the confines of the property as well. I guess my question was sort of a, you know, if we would direct the planning commission to start working on that, does that anyway, put the cart before the horse? While allowing the ZBA process to play out. I know it's going to take a few meetings to get to that point where we would have something to review and to amend or vote on or whatever, but does one process inform the other? Or do they run concurrently or how does that work?
This is Randy. They can run concurrently and I would advise you that it makes sense to have the planning commission start on this right away as soon as possible. And because that may negate the need to even go through the zoning board of appeals process. Just remember I said at the outset that it's very, very difficult to actually get a used variance. And, and I suspect she will not qualify for one. And so, you know, if you want to address this, I think the best way to end up addressing this is going to be through a zoning ordinance amendment that allows the use, but with conditions.
Thanks, Randy.
Either way, it doesn't sound like there's much that can be done at this point within the next couple of months to address the current immediate issue, right?
No, the, as we discussed, the filing of the used variance request pretty much determines that there's a stay under state law. And so nothing's going to happen in the short term on that, on the enforcement aspect of it. If that doesn't preclude you from going forward, trying to resolve it through a zoning ordinance amendment and getting the planning commission started on, on that path.
So I would just note, I believe Carolyn and JR, the planning commission meets next week Wednesday, I believe. So yeah, seven or eight, eight, nine days from now. So. And maybe there's some other materials out there already. I'm sure other cities have probably done something. And I don't know, Ken, maybe you've got a listserv that you can put that question out there or however you, wherever you do that. So before we get to a possible motion and on that matter, Marcy has indicated there is somebody else who wants to make public comment. We'll, we'll take that public comment. Why don't we take it with council's permission? Take that public comment before we do the motion, if any.
Do you want us, Steve, to finish all of our comments? I think JR had something to say.
Okay. Yeah, let's finish that conversation before we get to the other public comment. Yeah, JR.
Thanks, Andy. Yeah, I'm in, you know, I'm in the same boat with Justin and Andy and Josh, you guys, you know, you guys have all hit it on the head. You know, unfortunately, the ZBA doesn't meet until four days before the public schools go back into session, in theory. So, you know, the summer is lost or some sort of resolution for the residents who live, live in, live on that street and who are impacted by this. I guess I just wanted to echo publicly that I would just hope that, you know, between yeah, they could come up with some short-term friendliness to, 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 to enjoy a summer. You know, amongst current times, more people are probably home more often. And there may seem greater because people are at home, not working summer, doesn't matter. So I guess I would just people on that street, which is the most unique street in all of Granville for this to happen, of course. But I would just encourage them to, you know, come up with some version of a compromise or, I don't know, can we all just get along type of, type of attitude? So that's all I wanted to add.
Great. Thanks, JR. Paul, did you have something also?
No, I was just going to point out, I think we're actually still in public comment period.
Okay. Yep. All right, Marcy, somebody else wanted to make public comment?
We'll actually have two more. First we have Scott.
All right, Scott, welcome.
Hello, my name is Scott Bixby. I live at 4075 South Osage. Been a resident here for over 25 years. And a couple of things, listening to the comments here. One of the things was talked about how Rita, Ms. Rita and the rest of us should talk and compromise. We ran into this last week when she went door to door, having a sign or having the lady sign a petition that kind of put pressure on people. So the idea of having Rita and the neighborhood sit down, I'm not sure that that's gonna, you're not going to get the honest opinions. So that's just my two cents on that. There needs to be a different way of doing that. You need to hear from the residents and you need to hear from Ms. Rita. I think that after she went door to door, people were shaking their heads saying, I wish I would have said this. I wish I would have done this. So I think there needs to be a different avenue for that. And then when you're talking about a variance to this ordinance, I can get it. My kids went there, like I said. 20 years ago, there was a few cars coming down the street, didn't even know the difference. She's turned this nice little business into a huge success. And I think that some of you that haven't been on the council, if you go back, I bet you can probably find eight to 10 years worth of complaints. So look at those, not just the recent ones. And so before you make the decision or change anything, I want to see this very, very limited number of cars. She needs to have a changing room in her house or in her garage. So kids aren't being changed and diapers aren't being changed in our yards. And then vehicles have to be limited. They're backing in and out of driveways and it's not their fault. Most of them, it's their first time on our street and it's tough to find addresses on our, between North and South Osage. So I would ask that the number of cars be extremely limited and there be a timeframe between classes. That's usually the biggest issue. Like on Friday, there was 32 cars on the street and some are coming and some are going. So if there was a timeframe between that, that would make a difference. And I think we would all probably be interested in seeing that. But I, I agree with the comment earlier, I think it was Justin. Would you want that on your street? So when you're making this decision, I hope you ask yourself that. So thank you.
Appreciate the comments, Scott. I see Matt has been taking notes during that. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Marcy, somebody else would like to make public comment?
We have Erin. She'd like to make one more comment.
Okay, great.
I just wanted to say thank you everyone for the support and for your time. Thank you for Scott's comments. Just as in addition, I am wondering whether we do need to go to the Kent County Health Department for this issue. I mean, I counted 35 people in the yard that is shared between Rita and I today. And it, just in the midst of a global pandemic, being forced to be around that many people on my own property and no one, you know, using masks or anything. I realize the city cannot do anything about that, but I'm wondering if we do need to go, if it would be suggested to go to the health department because anywhere else we're going, you know, we're social distancing. We're on a Zoom chat and there's a lot of pools that aren't even open right now.
Yeah, Ken, do you want to weigh in on this? I'm not sure that's really something we can answer.
Well, you know, we're, we're social distancing because the executive order that's currently in effect tells us that in enclosed public space, we are to limit those gatherings to not more than 10. Currently, the EO with regard to outdoor talks about assembly of not more than 100. I suspect the issue is probably not the number so much as the distancing because the EOs then go on to say, when you do have events of those sizes, it still comes with an obligation to social distance. So we talked about trying to have a council meeting tonight in person and if we could do the outdoors and we were going to have to try to find a way not only to accommodate the numbers, but to find the space to accommodate distancing between those people. So I, I not seen that myself. I know some of the council members have been out in the last few days to check this out. Certainly Matt's been out there, code enforcement officer. So I can't speak to it, but I, I suspect that distancing is not happening there. I'm not sure that there is a avenue for enforcement on that or a penalty necessarily associated with that. I think the governor has issued guidelines and requests for compliance, but not necessarily with penalty attached to it. So it's hard for me to answer that question specifically. I'd be happy to look into it with the Kent County Health Department, see if they have any guidance on it. I don't know the answer as I sit here right now.
Right. Thanks for your comment and, and yours also, Ken. Marcy, anybody else like to make public comment that you can see?
No.
Okay, great. So back to possible. Josh, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to make a brief comment. I appreciate Erin and Scott being here to kind of share their thoughts from the neighborhood. But, you know, there'd be a zoning board meeting in August and it sounds like probably several planning commission meetings. I just want to remind people, those are open meetings as well and citizens are able to attend those and will be have an opportunity to share public comment too. So we proceed down the road of amending the ordinance. It will be very important, I think, to have input from all parties involved. The shell hoops as well as the neighbors to come up with the best result for everybody. So, you know, Scott, to your point, you know, maybe it's not comfortable having to sit down with, with the family and talking it out in the neighborhood, but those that are affected do have an opportunity to come and help, you know, provide input into the, whatever the ordinance ends up resulting in.
Great. So is there a interest on the part of the council to make a motion requesting directing planning commission to take a look at the whole home occupation ordinance?
So moved.
Support Steenstra.
Motion support. Any other comment? Any council member would like to make?
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll just explain why I'm going to vote no on this. I flat out do not favor allowing more business operations in residential neighborhoods. I do not favor destroying the character of our residential neighborhoods. I like livable, quiet, peaceable neighborhoods and I am totally in favor of the neighbors on this. So getting point and change the ordinance in order to allow for more people and more business operations outside in neighborhoods.
Any other council member? Okay, we have a motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist?
No.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mirmas?
Yes. Okay. Carolyn and JR, you've got some work, some more work for next week, Wednesday. Great. Next item on the agenda is a budget amendment and good news, right, Tammy? Yeah, Marcy, if you can, yeah. Hey, Tammy.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Good news for us?
Very good news.
All right.
General fund area. So what I'm asking council to do is to amend the budget. And I noted and Ken noted in his that this isn't in approval for future spending. This is amendment to upgrade the budget to what council has already approved for spending. In the general fund and six other funds.
Tammy? Tammy, we just lost you there a second ago.
State reimbursement for small taxpayer and industrial personal property tax exemption. That law was passed in 2013. The state collected $180,000 more than what we had anticipated. And then the interest income increase of about $50,000. There was a couple of areas.
Tammy, we lost your audio again there. Sorry.
Go here. We're waiting to see what they're going to project for the upcoming fiscal year. And they'll have another revenue estimating conference in August. So we'll have some more, more data to go with on their projections. So I'm not sure what it's going to do for next year, but this year they are projecting $85,000 decrease. And then the other large decrease was in court fines and fees of about $50,000 for the year. On the expenditure side, the major decreases in expenditures were in the police department, there was $125,000 decrease in wages and fringe benefits. That was due to just a number of vacancies that happened throughout the year. So there were open positions for quite a few months throughout the year as they were going through the hiring process and training. And then in the parks, there was $40,000 decrease. And then in the parks, there was forty thousand dollar decrease. This was all, most all COVID related. So although we're losing eighty-five thousand in revenue from COVID, we're also, you know, spent forty thousand less in parks. That was because we had just hired our seasonal workers on for the year, just at the beginning or the middle of June. And we also will have no summer rec programs, at least the cost involved in that. There is gonna be one tennis program and possibly, I think, a football camp. But, so our costs for the summer rec program will not happen in the nineteen-twenty fiscal year. And then the last one is for assessing. So for the legal fees and appraisal fees, there were not as many MTT appeals as we figured there would be. And a lot of them were settled before they went on and required any kind of an appraisal or anything. So the fund, the expenditures are expected to decrease by forty thousand in those particular areas. For the increases in the general fund, the major ones were the fire department and their overtime budget. That was due to a full-time employee that was on a leave of absence and covering his shifts throughout the time that he was off. And then in the cemetery, there was thirty thousand dollar increase in the equipment cost. We bought some new equipment for out there, so the rental fees for that equipment was higher than we had anticipated. So those were the major areas in the general fund. So all overall, the revenues are set to increase by approximately seventy thousand. And the expenditures are going to decrease by a hundred and fifty thousand, which will, like I said, add a hundred and eighty-five thousand to the fund balance. On the other six funds, in the special project fund, there was an increased expenditure of about thirty-one thousand. That was due to carryover costs from the library fundraising and website upgrade. The additional library fundraising cost that will be reimbursed from the dollars collected from the fundraising. So it doesn't decrease the fund balance in the special project fund. In the major and local streets, expenditures increased in major streets by three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. A lot of that was from carryover expenses from the ivanous repaving. But there was quite a few trees that were removed from the right away. The equipment rental and the maintenance were all higher than anticipated. All of that expenditure will come from the fund balance, and there is enough fund balance in that fund to cover that additional expenditures. Same with the local streets. The budgeted amounts were short of about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand to cover all the expenditures. Most of that was due to like additional curb and gutter work that we did, tree removals. And then there was some carryover cost from the prior year. And again, local streets has plenty of fund balance to cover that cost. In the storm sewer truncheon fund, the equipment rental was higher than anticipated by approximately eight thousand. In the DVA fund, they had property purchases. And they also had project architectural that they did not plan on having. So between those two, actually three, because there was two properties that were purchased in easement in the library parking lot or in, by the businesses down by the library parking lot. And then they purchased the parking lot east of the Rainbow Grill. And then the architectural expenses for the downtown project that is going to start when the library expansion begins. And then in the old pub retiree healthcare fund, the state of Michigan now requires an annual valuation, actuary evaluation to see what our unfunded liability is in our retiree healthcare. And that was a cost of sixty-one hundred dollars that was not budgeted. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think those are the major points, though.
Great. Thanks, Tammy. Anybody have questions for Tammy about the proposed budget amendments? Okay, seeing none. We have a resolution that has these budget amendments in it. Marcy, what would that resolution number be?
Three-two-three-zero.
Thirty-two-thirty. Okay, is there a motion to adopt resolution number thirty-two-thirty? Resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget?
So moved.
Motion and support by Josh? Any other comments or questions? Okay, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes. Next item is the consent agenda. We have the May report for the Department of Public Works and the investment report. As well as a small, as a small purchase order request from the DPW regarding a senior neighbor's garden fence. So approval of the consent agenda would be in the best interest of the city. Charlie, anything you want to add about the fence?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, great. We have a memo from Charlie on that, on the fence. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved. Steenstra.
Or.
All right, motion and support. Any other comments or questions?
My only question is for Charlie. Is four foot high, high enough to keep out like deer?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great.
All right, we have, yeah, we have motion and support. Any final questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes. City managers report. Ken?
Just one item on there tonight. It is a, another purchase, although it's a more sizable one. We've got our police court building that was constructed about twenty years ago. As that building is age, we've seen an increasing issue with regard to water coming in after rain and snow events. And so we budgeted this year to look at that roof and to do some work. I'm gonna let Charlie kind of run through it. The cost came in slightly higher than our budget. We do have the funds available, however, in our, in our budget. And this is recommended work in order to prevent additional damage from that leaking. Charlie?
Yes, as Ken said, there's been a lot of leaking going on in this roof, especially lately in the chief's office. We've got a, we've got a quote from a metal tech company and another one for a versatile. It was hard getting a third quote. But some of the big differences is that the metal tech wants to charge us like nine thousand dollars to come in and do an inspection and then come back and give us a quote to do, an estimate to do the work. Versatile is gonna come in and do it all at one time rather than doing it a couple different times. Versatile will put a winter ice barrier underneath the new steel where metal tech wasn't going to do that. Actually, gonna be extra charge. There's a, there's a better warranty with the versatile. You get up to a thirty-five year warranty on the paint finish on the metal. Both had a fifteen year on it. Versatile is also gonna use a different, a membrane underneath part of the flat roof. There's a lot, I think there, they went more thorough on the quoting and the proposal of it versus the metal tech. Versatile is gonna do it all. Metal tech was gonna subcontract out with weather tech for part of it. So with that said, I think that, you know, we gotta get it done now while we can. Rather than waiting for another metal tech to come back with more cost to us. It is over budget, but I think with, versatile is a good company to go with. And, you know, I recommend using them and getting the roof fixed, so the chief doesn't have a swimming pool in his office anymore.
Any questions for Charlie? Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to authorize repairs by versatile roofing systems in the quoted amount of hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in the best interest of the city?
Mayor Mas and Ken, you got a question in the chat?
Okay. Okay, Charlie, I did have, we did have a question come in through the chat. Is, was there a way to get a third quote on, on the roof? You may have explained part of it.
We, we, we called three different companies and no one ever showed up or returned phone calls to us.
Okay, okay, good, fair enough. All right, is there a motion to authorize these repairs in the best interest of the city?
So moved. Nordhuck.
Motion?
Support.
Steenstra. Support. Any other questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yeah.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes. Ken, anything else under city managers report?
There were some miscellaneous materials in the council packet, just for your information. But nothing that really, I think, requires additional comment. If there are questions about those items or anything else, please let me know. But that's it for me tonight.
Okay. Great. Councilmember comments. Josh, let's start with you tonight.
Really don't have anything. I was just gonna ask how things have been going with the city offices being opened back up and the public being able to come back in to do transactions.
No, it's been, it's been good. We're glad to have them back. I think they're glad to be back. We always offered electronic options and drop boxes and phone calls and emails. But it's just not the same on either end. So we tried to plan for it as best we could. We have beefed up our lobby because we're limiting the public just to that space and servicing them through a formerly decommissioned service window into the clerks area. Our staff has been very compliant on, and helpful to attend to that window, in particular to city clerk staff. We are asking the public to comply with the order and put a face covering on. And our staff members are also wearing face coverings when we interact directly with the public. We talked about a little bit to see if we needed to adjust after one week. And we're not gonna change a thing. We think it's working fairly decently to this point and with good cooperation. So we're gonna continue to offer masks to people in the lobby if they want them. We've got a sanitizer station. We've got social distance markings on the floor. And so far, so good. Doesn't mean that we might not need to make an adjustment going forward. And certainly we'll need to do that as the executive orders might change. But our first week was a good experience.
Good. Yeah, I saw the picture. It looks like a nice setup there.
Yep. Thanks to Marcy and thanks to Charlie's staff for helping set things up.
That's all. Thanks.
Great. Justin?
My first comment is I did receive another message today before the meeting regarding community engagement and community policing. So I just want to throw that out there again and keep that on our radar. The second point is I did put out some feelers about doing something for the Fourth of July from residents. There wasn't a huge response on that. I think we did talk before about the city maybe finding some way to do something. So I wondered, Ken particularly, if there had been any more talk of that. And that's it.
We have talked about it. No one has been able to seize on a, a great idea that seems to be a positive and also fit within the guidelines that we have to work with. We considered some sort of non-parade parade, I guess I'll call it. But you run into problems as soon as you start to publish a route that you might be attracting people onto that route. Just separate from what we would have done on Wilson Avenue. I think, as I mentioned before, the flyover will be occurring. The folks at the YMCA that run the traditional Fourth of July 5K are doing a virtual Fourth of July 5K with some nice features to it, including participant medals and T-shirt, things of that nature. But more of a self-directed kind of run. So I don't have, Justin, any, we had the same conversation with staff. There was a hope that maybe there'd be a brilliant, you know, brainstorm. And it was just fairly hard to find something that fit the bill. The restrictions that are out there are definitely difficult to assemble anybody under. And there's a reason why we had to cancel the Fourth of July, and that's it. So I'm still open. If there's anything we can pull off in short notice. But I had the same result that you had with the public. Nothing really quite fit.
Thank you, Ken.
Andy?
Yeah, first, thanks, Marcy, for such a good meeting. I know you're doing a lot in the background for, for keeping everything organized and safe and secure. After what we had to go through at the end of what I thought was, and I know some council members said it, but such a great conversation that ended in such a poor way. So, Marcy, thank you for being really, really on top of it, so we could have this kind of a meeting tonight. And I just wanted to, you know, kind of the, the other coin of what Justin said, bring back up. Like, I'd still like to see us have continued conversations about neighborhood or community engagement projects that we've talked about. Moving that and community, some, some form of community policing, or looking at how the police can get more involved in our neighborhoods. But specifically neighborhood projects, we wanted to pilot some. We had some great ideas. I think it fits with the, you know, what's going on. And it can be a, a clear form of action that we take as a step forward to get community to engage in discussion together. And now here we are, you know, two weeks later with neighbor, neighborhoods who are, you know, disagreeing. And, and honestly, I, I hate to hear someone say, I can't talk with that person. Like, they did this and I can't talk with them. It'll never work. I think there's always a reasonable way to work something out. And the, the first step of that is building relationships with those people. And so I think if the city keeps discussing how we can create a platform for neighbors to build relationships, I think issues like this with the swim lessons will be diminished. So anyway, I want to throw that plug out there. And then, Matt, I just, will you contact Rita and let her know what we discussed tonight? So that she knows exactly, like, what's happening from here. I, I didn't see her. She might be listening, but I didn't see her on the side panel. And so obviously, she's at the center of this. And I'd like everyone to be really, really aligned on, on what's happening.
I, I left her a message today. I haven't heard back or, or, if I don't hear back from, by tomorrow morning, I'll give her a call. Happy to do that.
Thank you. That's all for me.
Thanks, Andy. Tim?
Yeah, just a couple things. One, I, outside of the context of, of the swimming pool and the parking in the neighborhood, I'm glad we're gonna be looking at an old ordinance and, and just looking to see if we can do better. I know ordinances came up on our strategic planning session. And I think there are probably some other ones as I read through that might, might benefit from some updating. And then I'll be the third one to put a plug in for community policing. And just say, Mike, great job on that house fire behind my house a couple weeks ago. The fire department did an awesome job. But Paul, the, I noticed there were a few police officers there, one directing traffic. Roger Obama was amongst the crowd. And I just gotta tell you, those guys were interacting with people in a very positive way. Shedding a great light on our police force and how they're able to communicate with the public. And I think we just gotta keep looking for opportunities, whether it be coffee with cops or ice cream for kids with cops or cops riding bicycles through neighborhoods. I just think it's a great thing to see police officers and residents in the community interact.
Thanks, Tim. Paul?
Thanks. I don't really have anything. Just want to apologize for eating strawberry shortcake in front of y'all. But that didn't get served until five minutes before the meeting and not gonna miss out on it. I'm sure you all understand, but that was, that was the circumstance there. So that's all.
That's great. JR?
I just wanted to echo what everybody.
I just wanted to echo, wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July. I know it seems crazy that we won't meet again until July 13. But, just wanna wish everybody and their families safe holiday. And just wanna wish my, wish, personal best wishes to Jay Gukowski. I know he's, he had resigned recently, and I just wish him well on his next adventure. He's given a lot to the city in various forms, and I appreciate his work and I just wish him well.
Great. No, I just wanted to say I look forward to getting together in person again. And like JR said, next meeting scheduled is July 13, so that'll be good. Ken, I did have one final question for you. Kind of following up on Justin's comment. I've had a couple people ask about, you know, why we're not doing fireworks this year. And I've heard the explanation, but maybe that would be helpful if you could give that to us again. Because, you know, a lot of people think it should be a really simple, easy thing to do. So, can you let us know?
Well, yeah, I mean, primarily the issue there, again, is social distancing. You know, while some people might have the advantage of being able to view fireworks from their own property, by far, the majority of residents of the city will not be able to do that just based on their location or based on where trees are or how houses are situated around them. So, I think the fear is that if we do a fireworks event, open spaces where it's good viewing for fireworks are the first places that are gonna attract people. That's why every Fourth of July, there's a completely full lawn in front of the middle school on Wilson Avenue. And the St. Pius parking lot fills up. And we still are under executive orders that limit outdoor assembly to 100 socially-distanced persons. So, I don't think anybody in the city had any confidence that we could do a fireworks show and meet that requirement. So, I know there's different opinions about the executive orders and the extent of the pandemic and the risk and all that. But the bottom line is, we're a, we're a unit of government in the state of Michigan, and we need to comply with lawful orders from the state, and that's where we are. So, we are complying. We made that decision back in the first part of May, not knowing what the restrictions would be on the Fourth of July, but with the assumption that there will still be limitations on assembly. Here we are now, June 22nd, so six weeks later. And certainly, those restrictions are still in effect. And it's fairly easy to see, I think, that we're not likely to have a complete relaxation of those. West Michigan is part of a region that is deemed to be in phase four of six recovery stages from COVID. There are two regions in the state that are at the next level, which is phase five, and they still have assembly restrictions as well. That would be well below what we would need to run fireworks in the city. So, Mr. Mayor, I hope that's a good enough explanation, but just not possible to do it and comply.
Good, I appreciate that. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Vanderwaal.
Support.
Meringa.
And support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night.